Do you want to give Mr. Dabey a hug?
Good evening and welcome to October 23rd, 2017 Valley View School District Board Meeting. Mr. Beduris, would you please lead us in the pledge? Ms. Perel, could you please read the affirmation of the Board of Education mission statement and the Board beliefs?
Our mission is to empower all learners to be college and career-ready and to develop, grow, and achieve as productive citizens.
Thank you. Agenda, Mr. Beduris?
I make a motion to remove 5.4 from the consent agenda and to table it until the next board meeting.
Roll call vote, please.
Member Gilbo?
Yes.
Member Perel?
Yes.
Member Beduris?
Yes.
Member Campbell? Secretary Sikora?
Yes.
President Protem Zack?
Yes.
Mr. Grzafi, the agenda, please.
Yes, recommend agenda approval and approval of all revisions as just voted upon. Recommend to accept as presented.
Second.
Are those in favor, say yea.
Aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Consent agenda items, Dr.?
Yes, recommend approval of consent agenda items 5.1, approval of board meeting minutes from October 10th, 2017, approval of executive session minutes from same meeting October 10th, as well as the resolution number 1598 approving health insurance plan exemptions. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Member Beduris?
Yes.
Member Campbell? Member Gilbo?
Is this for all of the consent agenda items?
Except for four.
Except for four. I would like to request a revision of moving 5.3 consent agenda item, resolution 1598 to an action report under Gary Grzafi to 11.4.
Roll call vote, please.
Member Perel?
No.
Just moving this to an action.
Can you clarify that, please?
No, okay. Member Gilbo?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Beduris?
I didn't hear the end of what she said.
We're gonna move 5.3 to an action item. Consent agenda 5.3 to an action item.
Wait, I'm...
Okay, I believe that, Mr. President, may I jump in?
Yes, please.
So I believe that the motion is to remove 5.3 regarding health insurance plan exemptions from the consent agenda and move it to, under Mr. Grzafi's section, as 11.4. And there has, is that correct? Okay, so there has been a motion, a second, and we are... Correct, to remove 5.3, the resolution... To move it to an action item under section 11. There was a motion, a second, then needs to be discussion, and then a vote.
I guess my question is, why are we doing this? I don't know.
It's my understanding that if you have the consent agenda items, you vote on them as a group, and I would rather have them voted on separately. That's the only reason. The other, I guess, the reason that I would like it voted on separately, 5.3, is it is approving health insurance plan exemption, which involves mental health issues for staff members, and I would like to have a separate vote on that because I believe that the mental health and the other issue that is involved in that should be deemed as illness as any other illness according to the Affordable Care Act, and we have to vote on that, otherwise it automatically goes in as-is, and as-is right now, it is eliminated from the choices that are given.
Is there any other discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Okay, and the roll call is on yes or no on that?
Yes or no?
For moving it?
Yes or no on the movement of 5.3 out of the consent?
Okay, gotcha.
To 11.4.
Okay, so I had started the roll call with Member Perel.
Yes.
Yes. Member Gilbo?
Yes.
Member Campbell? Member Beduris?
Yes.
Secretary Sikora?
Yes.
President Protem Zack?
Yes.
Okay, so now, can I continue the regular consent approval that was started?
I think we had another consent item that we would like to move also. That's already been done, gotcha. Thank you.
So now, Mr. President, if it pleases, you need to have a vote on the remaining consent agenda. 5.1 and 5.2.
Madam Clerk, we have a vote for 5.1 and 5.2 consent agenda items. Roll call vote, please.
Member Beduris? Member Campbell? Member Gilbo?
Yes.
Member Perel?
Yes.
Secretary Sikora?
Yes.
Vice President, or President Protem Zack?
Yes.
Student and staff recognition. The Illinois Elementary School Association State Cross-Country Qualifiers.
Good evening, I'm Dan Lavery, Principal at Humphrey Middle School. It's my honor to introduce our coach, Mrs. Sanchez, to introduce our cross-country state qualifier, Josh. Here's Mrs. Coach Sanchez.
Good evening, I'd like to introduce Josh Beachler. Josh is an eighth grader at Humphrey, and he had an excellent year this year. He started out by participating in the cross-country camp that's at the high school, and then he came to our camp ready to go in the fall. He practiced hard, he practiced when we didn't have practice, he had great run times, his best time was sectionals, 11 minutes, 25 seconds. He ended his elementary career with 11 minutes, 38 seconds at state. He did a wonderful job, I was very proud to coach him, and here he is.
Good evening, my name is Josh Gage, I'm the Assistant Principal at Lucanzik Middle School, and I'm proud to present our coaches, Coach Simic and Coach Kay, for their students.
Good evening, everybody, this is Lucanzik Cure, and we have two great athletes, they did a great job, they worked very hard, one of them's a seventh grader, a male. When we started our program, we had four people about four years ago, or it was about eight kids total, and then now we're up to about 30, so we really increased the numbers, and we got them excited and they're having fun, that's the biggest thing. So with that being said, seventh grader, Ryan Buds.
State qualifier.
And then, two-time state qualifier, eighth grader Monica McCookus.
Just like one other follow-up thing, over the years, we've been building our team, and it takes leadership, and it takes someone to be kind of like the mentor for us, and I just want to like give a hands up to Thaz and the whole Jane Adams team. Every time, like, we had a question with anything, if there was like a, how do we run a practice, how do we build a roster up, how do we do anything, Thaz and the whole team has just been like so incredibly welcoming to us, and so we just have to give a hands up and a thank you for all that you have done, and we didn't want to forget two years in a row, because last year, it's nice to be back two years in a row, we look forward to being back again, but like last year we forgot, and didn't want to take that, forget again, so thank you for all you've done, meant a lot to our team.
Good evening, I'm Teresa Paulson, the Principal of Jane Adams Middle School, and on behalf of Ms. Adonik, the Assistant Principal, and myself, we are honored to recognize our student athletes this evening. I just always have to brag a little bit, real quick, academically, the crew that is about to step up to the podium, our current returning Mustangs of seventh and eighth grade, all increased their park scores, and they are showing proficiency or excelling on their park scores, as well as, are you ready for this? Their cumulative average GPA for this crew is 4.16. So of course, in the classroom and in their running could not improve without the support and dedication of the individual runners, as well as the families that are always supporting them, and as Lucanzik, I'll echo what they just said of the support of both coaches, of Coach Thaz and Coach Settle, so thank you and please welcome them.
Hi there. So I had the honor of going to the sectional, or I'm sorry, the regional meet for the high school, and first off, congratulations to BHS, making it down, they got the boys and the girls team to sectionals, which is a huge deal, so nice job for them. But having such a program like this, I was, I was going through my Twitter feed, and somebody had on the Twitter feed that they, it said, you know, somebody's got to start looking out for the Brooks cross-country, and you know what, I, this, this program, since I started it, or we started it 14 years ago, has gotten so big, and we are so honored to work with so many great coaches. Coach Sullivan up at the high school has been so accommodating to our kids with the summer running program that it's really been, we're starting to turn heads, and we're beating teams that they didn't think that we should be beating. It's really great when we go up against the, you know, second, the returning state runner-up, and their coach comes over to me and says, hey, your boys look really good this year, you know, that's, that's awesome, that's really fun. So before I introduce the boys, I just have to say this, our boys should have been at state this year. They were amazing, I'm always pessimistic because of years like this, the boys, they were one of the best, they were, they went to, they went to state last year, they were coming back, we're like, we're gonna be a top 10 team in the state, and we ran into a ridiculous sectional. So I am going to first introduce three boys who did make it as individuals, and that's usually a sign that a really good team didn't make it to state, is if you get more than two individuals down to state. So right now, I'm going to first introduce a runner that I have had a privilege of coaching with for the last three years, Mr. Andy Stone. One of the hearts and souls of our team, he's hilarious, and I'm going to miss him very, very, very much. He has a great family, I got to coach his sister, and this is the last Rodriguez, so Arturo Rodriguez, everybody. It's always nice when I know the last 200 meters, that this kid is going to pass any person who's even close to him, he's an amazing sprinter, and he's also an amazing distance runner, Julian Flores. So before I introduce the girls team, a little bit about our season with the girls, I, I went into the season, two years ago, our girls made it downstate, and we had a really, really fast team, and we got to state, and we finished 21st out of 21 teams, and I turned to Settle, and I was like, dude, we're never making it down again, this has gotten too fast, this is ridiculous, and I got so upset. And the girls didn't make it down last year, we got beat by a Jefferson team that came out of nowhere and beat us, and the girls came back this year and were really, really hyped up and ready to go, and we ran into a sectional that was very, very tough again, and we beat some amazing teams to get there, and I'm telling you right now, if you're ever wondering if it feels good to get revenge against the team that knocked you out of state last year, I'm telling you, it feels awesome, it's so good, okay? So our first girl up has moved up to fourth, all-time, and our all-time Mustangs, Kaylee Panic. A seventh grader who decided to dedicate herself this entire season to getting much, much faster, and moved up to one of our all-time Mustangs list, she ran a 12:43 at state, was it 12:43 or 12:42? 12:42, sorry, one second means all the difference, okay, Maggie Mueller, everybody. So it's always a nice treat when you get a sixth grader come in and just wipes the floor with the competition. Maggie broke the sixth grade record by 30 seconds, she ran a 12:45 at the state meet, and I'm so excited that I get to coach her two more years, this is Maggie Ballas, everybody. I have, I've been very hard on this girl for three years, and she, she keeps surprising me on how much she takes all the, it's very hard when your coach, when you run your heart out, and your coach says that wasn't fast enough, and then they come back the next time and they run faster. I'm very much gonna miss Nicole Mercado. It's always also nice to have a girl who keeps you on your toes, and every time you come up with a workout, asks you why we're doing that workout, she is constantly keeping me honest, and I'm going to also miss Claire Mueller. Now, this, there's twins, thankfully, one of them cut their hair, and now I can tell them apart very, very easily. Luciana really ran her heart out this year and managed to make it onto our, she was our seventh girl at state, so congratulations, Luciana Mercado. These three girls, they were our alternates going down to state, this is another sixth grader, she was a medalist at the Troy Invitational, she was a medalist at the Shanahan Invitational, and I'm looking forward to two more great years from sixth grader Ellie Nungare. Our next runner, she missed state last year, not kidding, by less than a second, it was half a second away, so I'm glad that she was able to make it onto our team, she's a great athlete and great runner and great person, Kaitlin Nodras. And our last runner, it's, it's fun when this, when you get a quiet girl, she comes in that first day of practice, we're a few weeks into the season, and she does the first 800 interval and beats half your varsity team, so it was nice to have her, and I'm also looking forward, another sixth grader, Anaya Terras. Thank you guys very much.
I would like to just thank all those coaches for the cross-country, all the time and energy they put into these kids. If you have any, if your children are athletes, you really appreciate what they do to help them get better. Thank you, coaches. 6.1, the American School Counsel Association, RAMP, Recognization.
Good evening. My name is Dorla Tepeyten, Valley View School District Director of College and Career Readiness, and I am honored to recognize two of our school counseling teams here at Valley View. I'll start talking while they come on down. School counselors in a comprehensive school counseling program impact the academic, career, and social-emotional areas of our students' lives. This year, Brooks Middle School and Jane Adams Middle School were recognized for the highly coveted Recognize ASCA Model Program, also called RAMP, designation during a special ceremony in Denver, Colorado, at the American School Counselor Association's Annual Conference. There were only 104 schools around the nation that received this designation this year. Jill Cook, the Assistant Director at ASCA, said, "This year's RAMP honorees have shown their commitment to students and the school counseling profession. These schools use data to drive their program development and implementation so that all students can achieve success. RAMP designation distinguishes these schools and encourages school counselors nationwide to strive for excellence. The RAMP designation is awarded for aligning with the criteria in the ASCA national model, recognizes those schools that are committed to delivering a comprehensive, data-driven program, and an exemplary educational environment. Since the program's inception, only about 700 schools in the nation have been designated as RAMP recipients. The RAMP application process is the culmination of the year-round, in fact, they, what they do is they take their previous year data and activities, and that's what they submit for that application. It is an extremely rigorous process, and the school counselors that you see behind me spent countless hours preparing and submitting that application. The RAMP designation is good for five years, after which time, they must reapply to maintain their RAMP status. This is the first time that the Jane Adams team has received the RAMP designation, and the second time for the Brooks Middle School team, and it's called reramping." and it's called reramping. I'd like to call their names because I feel that they deserve individual recognition. So for the Brooks Middle School team, it's Danielle McDermott. Give a wave so they know who you are. Chris Reitzjerna. Sarah Steiner. And for Jane Adams, Amy Haptis. Angela McCollum. And Katie Paulson. So in recognition of this honor, each of these school counselors is going to receive a Valley View School Pillar Pin from member Sakura. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. You did a wonderful job being counselors, and it takes a lot of time and effort for what they do for our children. Thank you again. Board member Laysan report from my left. From my right. Audience participation. Is there anyone that would like to address the board? If so, please state your name, and remember that due to time restraints, you have five minutes.
Hello, board and Dr. Mitchum. I'm actually going to read a short introduction for myself and the purpose of the coming in today. My name is Susan Cutner.
Could you please identify yourself?
Yes, sorry. Susan Cutner. Just ask that the board hear the short summary, and then respond and advise how they'd like to respond regarding a public issue. So I am Susan Cutner. I'm a resident of Valley View for 14 years, and I'm a parent of school-aged children. I also belong to a Facebook group called Parent Support Group, Bolingbrook, Romeoville, Illinois. And I'm here tonight to address a public concern. In the last couple of years, my kids started elementary school in the district, and I've met several parents, guardians, and other Valley View residents and citizens who shared some very concerning matters related to our kids in the district, and some who have experienced the same or very similar issues, some who have had or still have pending similar complaints. These issues are related to children mostly in elementary schools, students with or without disabilities, with or without individual education plans, or IEPs, or 504 plans. One of the complaints was recently founded with the violations in many categories by the Illinois State Board of Education, returned and dated July 31, 2017, to the district. And I have a redacted copy of the findings here in my hand. There are several issues in these findings that show that the district, school, or staff were found in violation of the Illinois State Board of Education. Violations founded include six to 10 significant examples or categories, such as free and appropriate education, or FAP, least restrictive environment, or LRE, isolation, isolated timeout or isolated seclusion, restraint, improper use of behavior charts, improper notification to parents, not identifying properly trained staff, such as in restraint, and not using BIPs or behavior plans, or not following IEPs or BIPs, following them improperly, improperly suspending or canceling or changing the IEP or BIPs. So this document actually also says that the district has, or had... The state board had asked that they comply by October 6 to make the corrections in the matters that were founded in the complaint. So as one of the very concerned parents and citizens of Valley View, I'm asking the board to give a public explanation and also show how the district, the school, and the staff has complied to these violations and corrections, which were due on October 6 of this year, and what changes are being made to ensure that the violations end. Please explain today or at the next open school board meeting how these issues are being handled. We ask the board to respond at the November meeting, I believe November 13. I'm not sure. Board meeting with a status update, if possible, on what has been done or what is being done to resolve the issues. Parents of disabled children in the district especially are now requesting a public response by the district and the school board regarding what is being done by the school and the school board to correct the systematic noncompliance which has been identified in the ISBE report. I do have a copy of the findings here tonight. And with permission, I'd like to approach the members, if I may have permission, to provide you each a copy of the founded complaint and for Dr. Mitchum as well. Is that okay?
I'm fully aware of the complaint and have a copy. But please feel free to pass it to the board. I do have a copy.
So in summary, just thank you for your time and consideration, considering this, and just asking, how would you like to proceed with a public response?
If I may have a respond. The Illinois State Board of Education is very specific about the fact that you may lodge your concerns about your child and your child only. This administration has yet to see evidence of any other parents with concerns despite your allegation that they are there. We have yet to see them. They have not been identified, and we do not know what their concerns are. So from my perspective, although I respect your right to approach the podium and address your concerns, we will address the individual findings that were related to your child. But I do not see evidence that would suggest we need to address any other findings that have yet to be determined. And in terms of parents requesting a public report or response, again, I would limit that to you because I have yet to see any other parents who are requesting a public report or response on findings that have yet to be identified other than the findings that the state has identified with your child specifically. And so we will address those concerns. I will leave it to the board's discretion as to whether or not they perceive that it's appropriate to air those concerns in our findings publicly as they are specific to your child. Beyond that, I will provide the board with our response to the state's findings of the 17 complaints and the seven that the Illinois State Board of Education deemed as founded.
And may I just add one correction? I did not identify this as my child. However, there are other parents that are in the audience today that have been concerned and that are concerned currently and have complained that they're of concern.
I'd be more than willing, and my staff, to address those parents once they have identified their concerns and made their presence known.
Thank you, Ms. Cutter, for your comments.
Board, allow me to introduce myself. My name's Miguel Angel Ruiz. I'm speaking to you as an alum, alumni of Romeoville High School, having graduated in 2013. An alumni of St. Louis University-Madrid. An alumni of Loyola University-Chicago, having graduated 2017. And as a person that has deferred enrollment for Erasmus University Rotterdam in the Netherlands. Now, I'm most exceptionally excited to announce that I've co-founded a nonprofit called the Hispanic Institute of Higher Learning Corporation to incentivize minority participation in higher education. And I've chosen to come to the board meeting because after many emails to both Romeoville and Bolingbrook counseling members, I haven't received a response. So let me explain to you what the Hispanic Institute of Higher Learning aims to do. With experience that I... With what I've experienced in Romeoville High School and in Valley View, I've identified a need for our... Specifically for our Hispanic community in incentivizing participation in higher education and in making sure that our specific needs as Hispanics are met. Now, when I went into a counseling appointment in Romeoville High School, I never truly felt as though my specific needs were being addressed. And while I was navigating the bureaucracy that is aid in the United States, I never truly felt as though I really had the support that I should have had when I was applying to all the higher education institutions that I was applying to. And following my graduation, I am not more excited than to spend my gap year trying to incentivize participation of higher education in my community. So really, what I'm asking and what this statement serves as is a statement of intent to engage with the Valley View School District 365U community. I would be thrilled to have a listening tour with my fellow community members of what I can add and how I can help as they're navigating through their higher education journey. So really, it's just trying to get my word out there after many emails to you all.
Thank you for that information. If you could leave your name and your contact number with Shelley Casey, the Executive Secretary, I will be sure to set a calendar event for the purpose of having a further discussion with you about what you'd like to do with the district, with the partnership you'd like to create with the district, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you for your comments. Action report, Dr. Mitchum? Action report, Mrs. Kinder?
Yes, sir. Action Report 10.1. We are seeking your approval on the adoption of two new high school courses, AP Computer Science Principles and AP Computer Science A. Information about these courses was presented at the last board meeting in accordance with the expectations and guidelines set forth by the college board. So we're asking your approval on the courses this evening, and I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
I have a comment, I guess, maybe question. Though I think the computer science additions are an awesome idea, I know throughout the community, a lot of people have approached and are concerned that we have had cuts in other programs, vocational programs such as fashion design, foods, childcare, the FACS programs and vocational programs, as well as the driver education programs in the community. And I would like to see that some of those are pulled forward.
Excuse me. We're going to need a motion and then a second before we start discussion.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
That's okay. No problem.
Second.
Discussion, go ahead, Sally.
I'm sorry. I won't repeat. But that's pretty much what I'm concerned about is... I know we've had a lot of cuts, and I would like to see some of the programs that can be used by the majority of, especially the driver education, brought back or looked at at least before we start additions of other types of classes.
Thank you for your feedback. We do take into account several considerations when we look at our course offerings. So we continue to offer robust offerings in the areas of career and technical education and vocational. Our students also have a lot of opportunity with our partnership through Wilco Career Center. So those opportunities certainly remain for our students. Students also have the opportunity at the high school level to select the electives that interest them. And so as interest was declining in certain areas and increasing in others, we are responsive to that. And then another variable that we take into consideration is our students' long-term planning and their post-secondary goals. So we have goals to increase our AP offerings, but not only increase them, ensure that our students are prepared to do well and, you know, sit for the exam and earn the college credit. So expanding these course offerings is directly linking to students' opportunities to earn college credit and go on into post-secondary options. So we do look at it in a well-rounded sense, and we will continue to do so. But advanced placement is definitely an area where our enrollment has continued to increase. Our students are seeking the challenge, and we are certainly providing them that challenge because we know that this will prepare them for wherever they go post-secondary. And that is also complementary to the other elective offerings we have to include vocational. So thank you for your comments, and we'll continue to consider that.
Thank you for considering those things. Also, maybe if we could look at the compare equity between the two high schools and the programs that are provided to, that would be nice. Thanks.
Thank you.
Rule call, vote, please.
Member Beduris?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Gilbo?
No.
Member Peril?
Yes.
Secretary Sakura?
Yes.
President Protem Zach?
Yes. Action report, Mr. Gersappe.
Yes, first action report this evening is for a contract for snow removal and salting services at Bolingbrook High School. Five bids were received and opened on October 5. Bids were evaluated based on the actual number of snow removal and salting occurrences for the past nine-year winter season averages. We are recommending the lowest combined cost to Burnec Commercial Services based out of Linwood, Illinois. The value of the contract is estimated at $48,303 for the 2017-18 season. Actual snow conditions obviously will determine the final cost of those services. We are recommending a one-year contract in order to give us the ability to evaluate their services. And if they perform as expected, we will bring back a recommendation to re-up for a second year. References have come back very favorable. And so at this time, we are again approving a one-year contract with Burnec Commercial Services to provide snow removal and salting services at Bolingbrook High School for the 17-18 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion or questions?
I have a question. I had emailed you about not being able to find them on the internet today, and you'd sent me back recommendations from them. I guess I have a couple of questions. One is, I assume this company has some kind of contact closer than where this town is located at that they're from? Because they're on the Indiana border. Because they're on the Indiana border, and so with snow removal, do they have contacts here around in this area? Or how do they get here to get this removed?
The contract for snow removal at Bolingbrook requires that the equipment be, remain on-site. So the equipment isn't coming and going. The labor would be the only piece that would be coming and going, but the equipment remains on-site for the season. The contract for snow removal at Bolingbrook High requires that all the equipment remain on-site at Bolingbrook High. The only thing that's coming and going would be the labor to operate the equipment. That's always been part of our contract there.
Hearing none, seeing none. Roll call, vote, please.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Gilbo?
Yes.
Member Perel?
Yes.
Member Beduris?
Yes.
Secretary Sikora?
Yes.
President Pro Tem Zack?
Yes.
Action Report 11.2 seeks your approval for networking and infrastructure upgrades utilizing the schools and libraries E-Rate program. This is something that we've done for many, many years. The upgrade will securely support the increased need for high-speed internet bandwidth required for most district instructional and operational needs. The E-Rate program will cover 80% of the costs for defined services and hardware items, leaving Valley View with the remaining 20% of those costs as outlined in Table 2 in the exhibit. The goal would be to complete these upgrades by June 30th, 2018. Total cost of the project is $501,303, of which $342,000 would be covered by the E-Rate discount, leaving Valley View's portion of $86,447 and other components as outlined in Table 2. I'm sorry, the first one was Table 1. Total district funds required, $159,291, to be covered by our most recently approved technology lease. And so as proposed, we are approving, recommending approval of the upgrade to the district network infrastructure program pending E-Rate approval of $342,012 in discounts of hardware.
So moved. Second.
Any questions?
There was a nice article in the paper about this, so I really appreciate everything you do to get this back for us every year. So thank you.
I couldn't say enough about our tech team and all that they do to bring this forward. They live and breathe services to our kids, and so the credit really belongs there.
Roll call, vote, please.
Member Gilbo?
Yes.
Member Perel?
Yes.
Member Beduris?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Secretary Sikora?
Yes.
President Pro Tem Zack?
Yes.
Action Item 11.3 is a purchase of band uniforms for the Romeeville High School band. We sent bid proposals to four vendors, two of which were received and opened on October 4th. The bids were invited for a total of 225 band uniforms consisting of many components, again, contained within your packet. The current uniforms are 10 years old. We have used the vendor that we'd be recommending in the past for both Romeeville High 10 years ago, Bolingbrook High most recently, and Jane Adams Middle. Funding for the uniforms would come from Romeeville High School's accrued band uniform escrow account. That's where we set aside a bit of money each year so that as time rolls on, we've got an amount of money available to fund the purchase. And so at this time, we are recommending the low bidder awarded for the purchase of the band uniforms to DeMolyn Brothers of Greenville, Illinois, in the amount of $89,739.
So moved. Second.
Roll call, vote, please.
Member Perel?
Yes.
Member Beduris?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Gilbo?
Yes.
Secretary Sikora?
Yes.
President Pro Tem Zack?
Yes.
I've got one more action. This was the item that was removed from consent, so this would be listed as Action Item 11.4. This is Resolution Number 1598, approving the health insurance plan exemption. We are recommending approval of this resolution. It does not propose, suggest, or enact any changes to our existing health plan. It's submitted on an annual basis to update the negotiated plan using the most current plan year, i.e., 2018. By exempting the health plan from parity in the application of certain limits to mental health and substance use disorder benefits, we have the ability to follow the plan as it's been negotiated. Thus, we are recommending approval as presented.
So moved.
Any questions? Roll call, vote, please.
Member Beduris?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Gilbo?
No.
Member Perel?
Yes.
Secretary Sikora?
Yes.
President Pro Tem Zack?
Action Reports, Human Resources, Mrs. Hawkes?
Thank you. This evening, Action Report 12.1. We're seeking the board's approval on the consolidated action report for certified and classified personnel. We're seeking approval on 22 items for certified personnel, 17 for classified personnel, and two for classified administrative personnel.
So moved. Second.
Any questions? Roll call, vote, please.
Member Perel?
Yes.
Member Gilbo?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Beduris?
Yes.
Secretary Sikora?
Yes.
President Pro Tem Zack?
Yes.
And my second action report this evening is 12.2, Resolution Number 1599, asking the board to approve the authorization dismissal of educational support personnel employee for reasons other than reduction in force.
So moved. Second.
Questions? Roll call, vote, please.
Member Gilbo?
Yes.
Member Perel?
Yes.
Member Beduris?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Secretary Sikora?
Yes.
President Pro Tem Zack?
Yes.
Superintendent's Information Report.
Yes, Information Report 13.1. We are presenting information prior to seeking an approval for the adoption of a new course at the high school level, Chinese 1. In coordination with bringing our strategic plan to life, we continue to look at our course offerings, as I mentioned earlier, and providing rigorous and relevant experiences for our learners. And one of these areas we look at is in our world language department. We are looking to adopt this course, Chinese 1, based on not only global trends and national trends, but also on the voice and the feedback of our students. Over 2,000 students in grades 8 through 11 were surveyed, and Chinese was the overwhelming top choice. This aligns with the needs that we're seeing. The government has also identified Chinese, Mandarin Chinese specifically, as a critical language. Our language, there's a large demand, but limited supply of speakers, relatively speaking. There's a huge market for opportunity for our students with an economic area of growth and career opportunities in nearly every field with having command of this language. And the benefits of language learning are well-known, but I just wanted to restate a few of those. Certainly, we're aware of the correlation with higher academic achievement on standardized test measures, the beneficial development in students' reading ability, evidence that learning another language transfers skills from the new language to English, correlation between higher academic achievement, as well as a correlation between high school foreign language study and higher academic performance at the college level. Offering Chinese also puts us in a position to apply for a government program known as Sponsored StarTalk Grant, which could earn us fiscal support to offer summer programming via an immersion-type experience. This Level 1 course would focus on the acquisition of critical language via structured learning opportunities that practice all different modes of communication. It would integrate technology to reinforce basic skills of the language, learning, reading, writing, listening, and speaking. Students would be introduced to standard, modern Chinese pronunciation, idiomatic expressions, speech patterns, and characters for beginning students. We would be teaching via the cultures where Chinese is spoken, and this would be an integral part of the course, would be the cultural learning as well. The information report that I'm sharing this evening outlines the course objectives, the course outline, and references the texts or supplemental materials that would be under consideration. The, of course, interest would be driven by student selection of the course, and that would determine the amount of staffing needed. And then the selection of a text or consumable resource would be determined as well. Be happy to answer any questions this evening or in between now and the next board meeting. And also, Kira Mokon, who is our enrichment administrator at Bolingbrook High School and oversees world language for the district, is certainly most knowledgeable in working and developing this proposal. And so I'd be happy to bring any questions to Kira as well.
I want to go back, again, we have a new curriculum coming up, to remember Gilbo's comment about the classes that were cut from Romeeville High School. And we keep bringing back that these kids can go to Wilco. But in order for them to go to Wilco, they basically are committed to a half a day, correct? Out of school?
It's not a half a day. It does span over a couple periods of their day, but it does not take up their entire day.
Two periods or three?
Is it three? Three periods.
Three periods. So my concern are those children who might want to go into a career such as being a chef, a designer, that type of thing, are not getting that at all if they're not willing to give up three periods a day, which I can see why they wouldn't want to. I think we need to go back and investigate that at some point in time because of the fact that I do think there's other things other than every child going to college.
Yeah, and the programming that you're referring to with family and consumer science and culinary, that was truly driven by student interest. And so there was such a low number of students requesting that course where other areas in our CTE or in our vocational ed are thriving. And so that was one area that student interest did dwindle, just like in the languages we used to offer German, for example, at both high schools. And as that interest started to decline, the need to have a part-time staff member or a full-time staff member in that area just did not exist anymore. And so students certainly do have those opportunities. Our teachers work really hard to promote their programs, to evolve them, to grow in the elective areas. That's why you're seeing some offerings come up in the world language area, in career and technical education area. So we are certainly about providing well-rounded opportunities for our learners, but those are two examples where student interest did decline.
Can I see, is there data showing the decline of those students in that that I could maybe see?
Of the amount of course requests for that program?
Right, because that's been, what, four years ago that that was dropped?
It has. I believe I may be able to access that if I have some help from our technology department because I don't have access to that because it's four years old now.
Four years old.
But I can certainly research that and let you know. I do know that when we made that, the German decision and then the fashion design decision at RHS, as well as culinary, it was purely based on the numbers. Because at one point, those programs were a lot larger in terms of students requesting them, and then it dwindled to the point where we were unable to justify having a full-time instructor for a small amount of, a small amount of students enrolled. And so they didn't lose that resource. It was shifted because students were selecting other, other courses of interest. But I can certainly research that and get back to you, Members Sikora.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Legal service, any report?
No report.
FAT, any report? Valley View Council, any report? Valley View Office Personnel Council, any report? Thank you. Any old business from the board? Any new business from the board? Any questions from the public on the actions that we have taken tonight? Any announcements from the board? Any announcements from the administration?
I'd like to make an announcement. The Romeeville High School band did an awesome job at their competition at U of I. They got third place in the competition, so congratulations and keep up the good work.
Any announcements from the public? Could I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Roll call, vote, please.
Member Beduris?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Gilbo?
Yes.
Member Perel?
Yes.
Secretary Sikora?
Yes.
President Pro Tem Zack?
Yes.
Thank you for attending tonight, audience.